Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
I will reconvene the meeting into open session and ask for John Fullerton to report out in the first session.
Item C1, during the previous closed session, the board acted to authorize the district superintendent for his designated to notify two temporary certificated employees who are shown to Education Code Section 44954 that they will be released at the end of the year, and to notify one first-year probationary certificated employee who are shown to Education Code Section 44529.21 that they will not be re-elected for the 2001-2012 school year. Item C, no action was taken. Item C3, no action to report.
Okay. Put your mentions to the flag. Um, my question is...
I have the mentions to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight are our Applepin Awards and who would like to go first? Wendy or Fran? Not Fran, Fran?
Sure.
Did you get the pin?
I've got.
You got the pin?
I've got everything else.
The pin?
Yeah. This is a very special person as far as I'm concerned in our district. This person was nominated by Dan Pierce from the Transportation and the Corp Yard, and he has nominated Brian Cudney. Brian is an exceptional employee and is constantly going over and above what is expected of our employees. He not only keeps the warehouse operating smoothly, he has also backed up and filled in for the mail delivery position while Bob Newkirk has been out on medical leave. He has been a tremendous help with the surplus textbook disposal, and he has filled in as a sub-bus driver when needed. Brian is willing to do any job that needs to be done to keep our district operations running smoothly, and he does it all with great attitude and a smile. The district is very well-served by employees like Brian, and whenever I need a box, I go to Brian. Brian always gives me the right-sized box. Brian, can you come up? And their certificate says, "Eureka City Schools Governing Board, Applepin Award, Brian Cudney. Thank you for your personal commitment, dedication, and outstanding service to Eureka City Schools." Signed by Judy Anderson, May 18, 2011. And there's a copy of that nomination. I had a check. I'd just like to thank everyone and to let you know that I just try to keep up with all the hard-working people in the district. Thank you.
Sorry, I had to give my pin. It was rather large.
I am pleased to be able to present this award, and this Applepin is for Mr. Randy George, and his nomination comes from the people at Grant School, and they write, "Mr. Randy George is a genuine treasure valued by all of the students, families, and staff at Grant Elementary. An incredible parent, Randy has been involved in our school activities since his son Jordan entered kindergarten." Is that Jordan? That's been a while. Just recently, and every year, Randy has organized and led over 100 Grant Bulldogs in the roadie parade. With a truck full of flowers, a miniature bullhorn, and the Grant School banner, he raises our spirit and instills school pride in all who are present. Known as the Marble Man, it was Randy's brainstorm to involve Grant School and the Eureka community in our world-record-setting marble extravaganza. We will always remember that day. As a PTA Board member for many years, Randy served in whatever capacity needed his attention: popcorn making, set building, sound man, and of course, our student's favorite, water balloon launching from the largest catapult in Humboldt County. This I need to see. Randy has left his mark everywhere you walk on our campus, both high and low. He can be found nurturing our nature trail, escorting field trips to Trinidad, and has even been seen in the kitchen at Wolf Creek. Randy has often expressed his appreciation for the teachers at Grant who have supported his son. Now it is our opportunity to share the enormous appreciation we have for you, Randy, and all you have done and meant to us. We will miss you, but do wish you and your family well with the PTA and your time at Zane next year.
I want to thank everybody at Grant School, and most of all, I'd like to thank my wife and my son for not divorcing me due to all the time I have spent away from home, and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Probably not. Well, my Applepin nominee is Ken Pinkerton, a fifth-grade teacher at Washington Elementary School, and I've nominated him for his work with the Humboldt Math Festival. This year, the fourth annual Humboldt Math Festival was held on April 9 at the Bay Shore Mall, and it was coordinated by Ken. Now, some of you might ask, but I don't know, it looks like a pretty good teacher crowd here, what the Humboldt Math Festival is all about? Well, its goals, as stated on the Humboldt Math Festival website, are to celebrate the richness of mathematics in a hands-on community event, to inform, illustrate, instruct, and inspire students, parents, and community members how mathematics weaves through cultures, history, art, science, and careers, and to foster and share enthusiasm and appreciation of mathematics. Well, I visited the Humboldt Math Festival this year, and actually, I went to the first one, and it does all that and more. The location at the Bay Shore Mall ensures a wide audience of families and community members, and helps them to connect with the math taught in today's classrooms. Our non-English-speaking families are apparently attending in increasing numbers, and this provides them an opportunity to see what their children are learning in school in a relaxed setting. It provides an opportunity for students to showcase their artwork, their posters, and displays, all about math. The festival also has created partnerships beyond local K-12 schools with College of the Redwoods, Humboldt State, the Keet Homework Hotline, and others, thus broadening the appeal of the festival. But most of all, the Humboldt Math Festival is designed to be fun. There are lots of hands-on tabletop activities such as games, and puzzles, and contests, make-and-take activities, computers, calculators, student art, math, history, and career information, all of which engage people of every age. Each participant receives a little passport, and they can take it to one of, or any of, the over 35 table stations, and by visiting 10 table stations and getting their passports stamped, participants receive a math-related prize to take home that will hopefully remind them of math. Coordinating a festival of this size is no easy task. Presenters, including teachers, professionals, students, organizations, and clubs, all have to be recruited. Funding from local businesses, grants, and donations must be obtained, and all of the arrangement details such as tables, and internet connections, and electricity, and supplies, and prizes must be accounted for. Apparently, attendance has grown each year, with up to 2,000 visitors annually enjoying this community celebration of mathematics. Some years, Ken has worked with a committee, and apparently, some years, he's pretty much worked on his own. But his colleagues all agree that he is the driving force behind the continued existence of this wonderful beneficial event, and we, the Eureka City School Board, agree. So I am very pleased to award this Applepin with our thanks to Ken Pinkerton.
I don't do this well either, but I'm only a very, or only one person of many, 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 somewhere in here looks at artwork and contributes. It's an amazing thing that happens out of the generosity of people donating their time. So, thank you very much.
Do you have people who want to take a picture of our Applepin awardees? Greg?
Yeah, me too.
Well, that is true.
We have taken pictures in the past and attempted to submit them to the newspaper, and they still won't print our Applepins.
Okay. Thank you all, Applepin awardees, for all the hard work that you do and give to Eureka City Schools. It is sincerely appreciated by those of us who sit at this table. Thanks you. Okay, so now we move to a public hearing. And this public hearing is to receive public comment on proposed CSEA and Eureka City Schools' changes to the CSEA Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement between the ECS Governing Board and CSEA. These interests for negotiations are in the board packets, and if anybody else would like one, they can request one from the district off, from Mickey. So I will now open the public hearing for comments. Hearing none, I close the public hearing. And we move on to item I. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments necessary. Yeah, your consent? On your consent agenda, item M20, thank you again. We're pulling down from the agenda at this time.
I'm sorry, it's, which one?
Dates 30.
Oh, the M20, the job description? Okay.
This is a discussion action item.
Okay. Okay, we'll move down to information, student representatives' reports, and we have Mitch Mastroni, who is representing student government at Eureka High School.
Hello, my name is Mitch Mastroni, and I'm representing your guys' student government. I'm the senior class president. Contrary to popular belief, we've been really busy, we simply. Back in April, senior class put on the Senior Class Night, which is a yearly event that the entire school gets involved in, and was a great success this year. We raised enough money that we decided to donate $1,500 to the Humboldt County Chapter of the Red Cross for relief efforts in Japan. Shortly following, junior class had their prom at the Eureka Inn, and soon, the senior class will have our prom at the Sequoia Park Zoo. We think that the proms are a great opportunity to highlight wonderful community venues, and I think this year, we've done an excellent job at doing that. Next week, we have a lot of stuff coming up, including Give Youth a Hand, which is a wonderful event that is, again, happening every year, and the Academic Fair, which is a way for us to recognize student accomplishments and our almost 40 clubs on campus. At the end of the week, we'll also be hosting our annual Powder Pop Game, which is a wonderful way to end the year with a little bit of fun rivalry between the junior and senior class. Student government is a really important part of our school, and we appreciate all the support that we get from you guys, and definitely like to thank you all for that. Are there any questions?
I imagine you can be one of the cheerleaders for the senior class?
Without a doubt.
Dates and times for Give Youth a Hand, Academic Fair?
The Give Youth a Hand and Academic Fair are this Tuesday on campus, starting at, I believe, 12 o'clock.
Okay.
They'll be running into the afternoon.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mitch, you forgot the music department. They're having a jazz concert Tuesday night at our consider, and the following night will be an orchestra. All the music programs will be in...
I actually have a schedule for that.
You do? Okay, good. I think it's important, this kid worked in it about four years.
Pass this one, okay.
It will be nice to see everybody going and enjoying our play, and see what each children have produced in the last four years, the seniors particularly.
Yeah, as a senior in the music program, I can vouch for that. The seniors have, I've had their share of struggles in the past four years. We've gone through three different band directors, and a lot of us have stuck with it, even though it hasn't been easy all the time, and we definitely appreciate all the support that the community has given us in events, especially ones like, that I'm thinking, Dancing and Delectables, which came together wonderfully this year and got a lot of the community together, and that was despite the fact that we had, again, the third director in four years, and we would appreciate any support that you can give us by showing up to these concerts that are being passed around. Any more questions?
Those concerts date in a tickle file?
Are those concert dates in a tickle file somewhere?
Thank you for the time.
Can email that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's get copies of this.
She's gonna email one of this.
Or else, we can get copies before we leave tonight. Okay. Any other student representatives here tonight? No? Okay. Superintendent's report.
I will be out of the district tomorrow. I'm going to be over in Reading, attending the school services May revision workshop. I normally come and talk bad news. I will say that the current governor's May revision to his budget is probably about as good as schools could have expected. No dramatic cuts. There's even discussions as to if we can get the Republican and Democrat side of the House to agree on what the governor is trying to shy away from the phrase "tax extensions", but the vehicle licensing fee and other fees moving forward, he's trying to hold schools harmless. There was talk at one point about a suspension of Proposition 98, and the governor is not recommending that, and the good news was that the Republican Party came out at about the same time, and they're not recommending a suspension of Prop 98 either. And what we're really hoping for is, and part of the governor's proposal, probably the biggest benefit to schools, is he is talking about giving back or moving back to its appropriate time, the $2.1 billion deferral that moved money from one year to another, which is really creating cash flow problems for schools throughout the state. The governor's statement was that that was a budget-balancing ploy, and he wanted to move away from ploys and have a more direct way. So I will know more, and we'll bring back more information with guarded optimism. I'm hoping that it kind of hangs on and holds tight. It seems like the governor's proposal and the Republicans' reply was very close, and so I'm hopeful that maybe we'll have a budget on a timely basis this year, and that it'll hold schools mostly harmless. Superintendent's advisory is meeting this Friday at 9:30. We're going to talk a little bit about parent involvement policies, but more than anything else, we're going to kind of celebrate the year and talk about a lot of the achievements, a lot of the things that have been done to try to improve student achievement throughout the district. So again, that's Friday at 9:30. And then lastly, the last superintendent's forum for Humboldt County is going to be May 27 at the Humboldt County Office of Education, so I will be attending that. I was confirmed, I guess, as an executive director for the Small School District Association. I think that'll bring some real benefits to Eureka City Schools, and today, I evidently did not raise or lower my hand quick enough, so not only am I still serving on the Schools' Insurance Group for Humboldt County, I am now the vice president of the Schools' Insurance Group, so. It's a quality group, and we do good work. It's just, my goodness. And that's all I have.
Okay. Board members' reports. Fran?
Believe it or not, I didn't do anything. I went to a retired teachers convention, and that wore me out.
Okay.
I've had the pleasure so far to visit two sites, the Corvus Word, spend an hour and a half with Coach Lutz, and with Miss Ryan, so I'm trying to come up to speed as rapidly as I can. I have no questions and answers, and I will ask a lot of dumb ones.
No such thing, board member, Ben. No such thing.
Wendy?
I had an opportunity to be on the Zane campus almost every day during STAR testing week, and I just wanted to say that the students really were on task and focused, and there was a lot of good things about this series of STAR testing, which can be really stressful. And being there, it was nice to see that it was handled well. Not a lot of chaos, not a lot of crazy kids running around. I also have had had a number of conversations with teachers who are looking forward to the summer academy and the professional development being offered, and it was really good feedback. People are getting excited about that. One more thing to pass along is the 22nd District PTA Annual Dinner is May 22, and I would like to invite my fellow board members to come and join us. So I have, I might be missing one. A little plug for the PTA. You know, we're on most of our Eureka City Schools sites, and we are having trouble filling board positions this year in almost every school site that we have, so if you ever wanted to jump into PTA, now's the time. Go talk to your school site administrator or your local PTA, and the district also has some PTA positions to fill, so, sorry about that little advertisement.
John?
Nothing to report.
The only thing I have to report is about the Safe Roots to Schools Committee group task force that I serve on, and just to kind of keep you up to date, we have an upcoming walkability audit that's going to happen at Lafayette Elementary School in June. They're working on a date right now, and then they're working on crossing guards maybe put under the offices of the county Public Health Department. We'll see if it works out, and it would be training, and schools could sign up. We'll see. We'll see. It's in the very beginning exploratory stages, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. And that's it for me. So let's move to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any, I don't have any green sheets. Anybody? No? Okay. We'll move down to the consent calendar. Any questions or concerns on the consent calendar? Okay. Even I have none.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion carries. Okay, we'll move down to M19, reschedule the July 13 board meeting. So, it says your name as the contact person, Greg.
At our last meeting, we were discussing the July 13 board meeting. It seemed as if we were maybe to have difficulty with a quorum. Not all members could attend that time, and we wanted to explore the option. So you guys requested us explore the option of potentially moving that meeting to another meeting. I think where we should probably start is who's unable to make the March 19, or the July 13 board meeting.
I have another commitment. It's the long one.
Is that the one that's regularly scheduled?
Yeah.
And the issue is, the July meeting is the one we were going to go over the vision and goals for the upcoming year.
That's four to seven.
Well, we haven't actually, yeah.
And then afterwards.
Afterwards, depending upon, because we're also going to have to move something else from the June 1 meeting to this July meeting as well. So it is...
Any other Wednesdays fine by me.
Okay.
I didn't have any trouble with any of the other Wednesdays. Does it really, I was thinking that actually, either the, actually, the 20th would be the best for me, because I don't know about post-op and all that kind of stuff, and at least as of now, the 20th, or, and I don't know about the 6th, but I don't think the 27th would work.
I would have an issue with the 6th.
And I have an issue. I'll be uptown on the 20th.
20th?
You shouldn't have put the 20th down.
Okay.
I'm good. Any day, anytime.
Me too.
So the 20th is out?
Yeah, because we need Greg here for the vision and goals.
I guess, well...
Yeah. So why is the 27th not, doesn't work for you?
I just don't know. That's supposed to be pre-off for me, but...
Oh, pre-off.
Post-off.
Post-off.
27th of July?
Yes, but let's just do it that, and then hopefully, when I get down there, I can just say, "I can't come then."
So it's when you're supposed to come back?
Yeah, when I go back.
Okay.
Hasn't been completely set up, and I, evidently, they'd expect you to be there when they set it up. Now, you don't get a choice. But let's do the 27th if it's all right with everybody else.
That works for you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I need a motion to reschedule the July 13 board meeting to July 27.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move the July 13 board meeting to July 27. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, M20, we have pulled, so we are to discussion. N21, curriculum adoption, Holt California Pre-Algebra for 7th grade and Holt California Algebra for 8th grade.
Yes, I'd like to introduce that item to the school board, and after a very short introduction, then I'll be turning it over to Mr. Chuck Bush, the principal of Zane Middle School. So the governing board is asked to discuss prior to adoption instructional materials to be used for all core math classes at Zane Middle School, Holt Pre-Algebra for 7th grade, and Holt Algebra 1 for 8th grade, and you can see those two texts, they're the red and the green on the back table back there. This work has been the result of a collaborative effort between the math department, the Zane administration, and the district and school liaison team, which consists of, when we meet in the full at his cabinet, plus the Zane Site Council representation and Zane leadership. We've been looking for, all year long, it's been a collaboration, we've been looking for a way, studying the best possible curriculum delivery for the math program. for a way, studying the best possible curriculum delivery for the math program to get higher achievement levels on the part of the students. You have the green sheet that provides plenty of information about the history and Mr. Bush and I, if there are any questions you might have regarding that history. Also, there's a chart that's broken up into four quadrants that kind of gives you an overview of core 7th grade, core 8th grade, and then how the materials are going to be used and modified and supplemented for students who need strategic support at 7th grade and strategic support at 8th grade as well.
Usually, I apologize. I have got that thing turned on in the past for other presentations. I did do that, but.
Slowly.
What we're presenting to you tonight has gone through the curriculum committee and it, I'll display back there, it's for our math program, 7th and 8th grade math adoption. One of, one of the first questions that I'm sure you're asking yourselves is, hey, weren't you here just a couple of years ago asking about math adoption? And I wasn't. But, but in fact, just a couple of years ago, when, when schools were combined, we did come to the, come to the board for some math adoption. And because of the situation we find ourselves in, we're coming to you again. What we've done this year, we've spent quite a bit of time looking at our programs as a whole. In particular, Language Arts and Math because of the academic program survey, because we're a program improvement school, the academic program survey really guides our actions in, in how we look at our programs and try to figure out how we can improve our school. One of the big things for Language Arts and Math in particular is developing opportunities for collaboration, building common scope and sequences for, for your curriculum, building common assessments by, by course, and then building in time to collaborate around that data that's generated from those things to find our strengths and weaknesses and improving those strengths. Look at me.
Rich, while you look at that, I will say a few words as a math department member, but this year has been a real opportunity for us because we have gotten together as a math department at least once a month or so to talk about our benchmark results and actually get together as a math department and meet usually after school or a couple hours afterwards to kind of see where we're going, what have our success has been, what can we learn from each other, planning for our next benchmark tests and see where, you know, where we can improve things. So that's been a real, a real plus this year and I thank you for that time that you've spent together.
So that really has been a big focus. But, but one of the things that's gotten in our way in particular in math is our curriculum. We currently have two platforms in Algebra 1. We use CPM and we use a traditional Algebra 1 program. That has given us a lot of trouble trying to align our scope and sequence. Last summer, Mr. Funkhauser and Ms. Pereira spent quite a bit of time trying to align that scope and sequence. And in theory, that was a good idea. But it really, as we went through the year, didn't work out. We've had a really tough time developing a common pacing guide and it's been nearly impossible to come up with common assessments other than our benchmarks that give us any real data that we can use. Another issue has been vertical teaming, vertical articulation, both with our elementary feeder schools as well as the high school. I spent quite a bit of time talking with the high school math department about, about how we can better support them with our kids coming up. And one of the things, one of the things that, that, you know, they really focused on is that because we've got these dual platforms in Algebra 1, kids are coming up with real different sets of understandings and it's causing them quite a bit of frustration. So, so, you know, that's a big deal. We want to be able to, to build some vertical articulation teams, both with our elementary schools and our, that feed us and our high school that we feed. On both sides of us, we've got real traditional programs and, and we've got kind of a traditional program, but not completely. And ultimately, what we needed is some tools. We need, we need to be able to collaborate better. We need to have some common planning. We need to have data to plan around. We need assessments and we need to be able to promote, you know, a general team approach in our math department. So that's, that's really what got us looking for something besides what we got. So. It's not going, it's broken. It's not.
You can go over there and test the screen.
Will it work?
Should.
Can I touch it anywhere?
Actually, on the arrow down there.
Bottom left.
Yep, on the arrow of the.
This one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. I'll stand over there. So what we started doing was, was searching. We started looking, we went up to HCOE, we started really with conversations about, you know, what do we need? And we didn't really know at first. So teachers started visiting the county office event, looking at adoptive materials, talking to, looking online, talking to reps from, from different publishers, all those kinds of things. And, and we had lots and lots of discussion and then a little bit more discussion. And then we brainstormed a while and then we had a little more discussion. And finally, we got to the point where we said, well, we need to start piloting some things. So we began to pilot lessons, units, exams, support materials, all of those kinds of things. We started looking at, how does, how does this really work in the classroom? Can we differentiate both up to support and challenge kids that are more advanced as well as differentiate down to support kids that are struggling? Can we do both of those things? All of that kind of stuff, just trying to figure out what we really knew about these materials. Then all teachers that were piloting stuff filled out the little form. What's the form called, Rich?
Pilot Feedback Form.
Feedback Form, yes, thank you. So they all filled all those things out and we talked some more and had some more discussion until we finally came to consensus. And we came to consensus on, can I just flip?
Don't look.
Are you going to go back?
So maybe you try to.
No.
It's back.
It's not. You're going the wrong way. Hey, John. Man, I'm having a lot of.
If you touch it once, I believe it'll give you the arrow.
Yeah, there you go.
In the corner. No, just one time.
It's going the wrong way. Never done.
Lady, go quickly, Chuck.
Okay, just go to the slide you want now.
On the left side.
Click on it, open it up.
Now, how do I make it slide shift?
It's not oriented.
You know, we're going to have a whiteboard, we're going to have a whiteboard training as part of professional development to read here. We are.
Just take off your arms wide up on the top.
This one?
There you go.
But that's the wrong one.
One tap.
That's impact. You still get it done.
There we go.
So, so this is what we came to consensus on. The California Holt, Holt Mathematics Program. Okay, next slide.
You did all that work for a picture.
Well, I want to show you this nice picture. I'm scared to touch it. Go, come on, do it again.
Yeah, move that bar up at the top. Would you, up at that top, move that up. Oh, it presses and it should come out and it will have an orient button.
Which slide do you want?
The next one.
Smartboard Tools.
Smartboard Tools.
Okay, so.
Lori, just have the choice deliberately on pound.
There we go. All right. So the 7th grade, the 7th grade text that we want to use, we want to use this for core as well as strategic support. Most of our incoming 7th graders would be in this text. We will probably have a few that are in Algebra 1. And we will probably have a few that are in intensive intervention, which would be outside of this text. Strategic intervention would be here, though. This really is for kids that are at grade level or very close to grade level. Students that are struggling would be provided strategic support first within the, the regular program and if necessary, outside of it with an additional mass support class. And all of the kids that are in this text will take the 7th grade CST. Now, there's something up there that I don't know how it got there, but, okay, for those kids that are more than a year, but, but less than about two years below grade level, so one to two years below grade level, they would be in this same text with a slightly, with a slightly modified pacing guide to, in order to provide additional kinds of scaffolding and support to them. In addition, if they're strategic students, they would have an additional mass support class to, to provide them with specific skill support intervention. The reason that we want to do it that way is so that, so that there's fluidity, so that when, when a student has a specific skill deficit, then once we identify that, we can support that skill deficit and then pull them immediately into Core. And vice versa, when they're in Core and we find a skill deficit that's causing them to not be able to move forward, we can provide them a strategic support, support that skill and then move them back to Core and have real fluidity there. If we had, if a separate scope and sequence and those were very rigid, we wouldn't be able to move kids in and out of those groups as appropriate. Okay. I don't know why all that stuff is there.
Mr. Bush, on this, is this assuming that all of the students that need strategic support are in the Core 7th Grade class or are you setting up different sections for different needs?
Both of those things. We're setting up sections depending on need and right now, we are doing a placement test to begin screening so that we know how many sections of each thing we need. For the 7th graders, we are setting up mass support classes that are aligned with the same periods that we have our 7th grade electives so that those kids can move in and out of elective into support as needed. Does that make sense?
And it's really important to keep in mind that it is our responsibility to make sure that all of our students have access to Core. So a majority of our students are going to be very comfortable in Core as they come out of the elementary schools. We have some students who are going to need Core Plus and it's that Core Plus and the scaffolding, the scaffolding where the, where the concepts are broken down, very much using an explicit direct instruction model, where they're breaking down a concept even more. So when the student returns to their Core class and gets that access, they have a little bit of a jump start to the concept that's being provided that day.
For 8th grades, it's the same basic kind of setup. We're, we're one too far. Hate to say it, but let me see if I can back up. For 8th grade. No? Yeah. For 8th grade, we've got two kinds of classes as well. The first one would be Algebra 1, high school level Algebra 1. Ideally, we'd like nearly all of our kids in high school level Algebra 1. We're, we're not there yet. We're, we're estimating that somewhere around 30 to 40% of our kids next year could be successful in Algebra 1. In addition to that, again, using the same text, we would have what the state refers to as an Algebra A class. It is for, for students that just aren't quite ready for the academic reader level and the pace of a high school level Algebra 1 class. What the state tells us that we have to do for an 8th grade student that's not in Algebra 1 or higher in math, is we, we are supposed to provide them with a first year of a two year algebra program, meaning they would, they would take something with us and they go to the high school and have high school level Algebra 1. And in particular, in my conversations with Matt Deldo, that's, that's kind of where, that's where we're falling down with our two platforms because the kids are going into only one kind of platform out there and, and because we've got two and they're funneling into that one, we're really falling down there. Oh, we're bad. Good job. We went really bad. Thank you. The students that are in Algebra 1 Core will take the Algebra 1 CST. Okay? Go ahead. Should I do it or should you?
I'm trying.
This really is supposed to be a fast presentation. Do I dare?
Yes, let's go for it.
The strategic slide that we just passed, that's okay, just hold it right there. The strategic slide that we just passed, again, it's the same book. The point of this class is to provide something more rigorous than Algebra, than Pre-Algebra, but not quite as rigorous as a high school level Algebra 1 class. So we can use, again, the same book, a very similar scope and sequence, provide more scaffolding and support and really prepare those kids so that when they go to a high school level Algebra 1, they have a lot of support, they know the concepts and have some opportunities to grow there. Students in this class do not take the high school or the Algebra 1 CST, they take the 8th grade. They take the eighth grade general math CST. Because we're in program improvement, it's really important that we place kids in these two programs very well. We do not want students that are in Algebra I, uh, to not be successful. We need, you know, eighty-five to a hundred percent proficiency grades in Algebra I. Uh, so we have to be very careful and make sure we place kids there. Because the, these math tests are a big part of our A M O, so, okay. You guys have seen this slide a few times, but, um, the strengths and weaknesses of, of the program, um, are, you know, are listed here. The, the, the most significant strength of, of this whole program is the sequencing of the lessons. The lessons are laid out, um, in a way that, that the staff felt, uh, was the best of everything that we looked at. Uh, right now, what we have to do in our, in particular in our pre-algebra class is, uh, they jump all over the book, all over the place. Um, and, and this whole program lines it out. So, so there's a little bit of, of movement around through the book, but it's, it's pretty much, the scope, uh, and sequence are set up pretty much exactly the way that, that we want to teach it. So, that, that was a big deal. The other thing I wanted to point it out is that, um, this program with adoption has, uh, online video lessons. It could be used by subs as well as perhaps the students that are at home. Uh, they can, uh, bring that video up and, and look at that. Uh, the, the two weaknesses that were pointed out are that the teachers felt like this program was a little bit light on the drill and kill. There, there wasn't enough of that. At this, at the same time, though, they felt that we've got more than enough resources to add, uh, more of that kind of road drill. Uh, and this, the second, the second weakness, they felt that the, uh, the standards were, were not, um, well, they were emphasized equally. You know, we have power standards, uh, and, and there, those aren't really highlighted, uh, in, throughout the text like the teachers felt they should. But again, that's something that teachers can do relatively easily. So, the last slide, all right. There are two components that are online, uh, with, with this pro, with this program. The first one is free, uh, with our adoption. Kids go on there and they can get some tutoring help and examples of how, uh, to work out, you know, problems and those kinds of things. There's an additional subscription-based online support as well that, uh, we're considering, uh, purchasing, uh, in particular, to, to be used with our after-school program for, for specific students and, you know, as, as needed, so. So, there is our, that's our presentation. I apologize for the tech, technology issues. Are there any questions?
Um, Eureka High School is pleased with your choices?
Yes.
Okay.
Very much.
Um, are your math classes at Zane ability grouped?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Are they ability grouped, the classes?
Um, uh, yes and no. They're, um, the way they're grouped is by, I guess it's kind of by ability. What, what we do is we assess the kids, see where their needs are, um, and then, and then place them accordingly so that we can build, um, we can build on their skills. We don't want to put them in a class where they can't possibly do the work. And we also don't want to put them in a class that's too easy. The, the one thing about it, though, that, that will help with this program, that will make it not ability grouping so much, will be really tracking, is that, that fluidity. Kids, as they need additional support, can move out and get more support. And, once they don't need that support anymore, can move right back in, uh, which will help that quite a bit.
My concern has always been that the brightest kids end up in classes that are far too easy. Middle school is the big place that those kids that easily get lost.
Absolutely. Uh, and, and I think that, I think that's one of the things that slows us down. When we don't have, when we don't have options to, to pull kids out, kids out that need more support so, so that we can move that class along at, at its pace, you know? Um, that slows us down. And, and again, the way we're planning on setting this up next year will really help that.
Brighter kids in math go fast.
Absolutely.
They get bored. Okay, now, down at the bottom of page thirty-five, it says, "Up to ten eighth graders may go to geometry and research through an online course." So, how is that going to work? They're going to go on a special classroom and sit together and?
Well, we don't know yet exactly because we don't know how many kids we're going to have with geometry. If we have enough, we'll offer a section.
Right.
Uh, if, if, if we have three, it'll be really hard for us to offer a section. Uh, one of the things that, that Rich and Greg and I saw at the, um, Turner School Conference was some really nice online programs, uh, through universities, uh, that, that offer credit for these kinds of programs. So, you, you know, we talked about that, um, as an option in case, in case we only have one or two kids because we don't want to hold them back. But at the same time, you, you know, we, we aren't going to be able to offer a section of it if we don't have enough kids.
And I understand that. My, my concern is, they're going to be able to take the online course while they're at school.
Yes.
They don't have to then go try to, okay.
It would be at school, uh, in our facility.
However, if we have a student who's and with their parents so desired, it's also an option where if they wanted to fill their schedule with a couple more lectures and do the geometry on their own as long as we're getting a sufficient pace, we're trying to, once again, to have the program that the students need and so vice versa, so. But it's not, it's not a desire that this would be tapped on, you're being punished because you're a bright kid.
Right, exactly.
We'll give you something, I guess.
That's my concern.
Yes, sir.
Um, on this fluid movement, I'd like you to expand and explain how that's going to work.
Well, um, I, you, you know, ideally, particularly in math, what, what you have is kind of gatekeeper skills. Skills that, that hold kids back. And they're capable of the higher, the higher order things that come beyond that, but, but they don't understand a particular skill. One, one thing that really holds kids back in seventh grade is fractions. And they, they don't understand how, how to work with fractions very well. Uh, and, and it's, they can't seem to get past that. And so, you know, we've got a couple of options there. We can just spend months and months and months just drilling them and drilling them and drilling them on fractions and let them get further and further behind. Or, we can provide them some support, give them some additional kinds of resources like, like a, another math support class, where in that class, we, we drill and drill and drill and work on that. While at the same time, in the regular Core class, we're providing supports and moving them along, um, with, with that, that skill and all that's behind, you know, this, this fraction stuff. So that when they finally get it and, and they don't need that fraction support anymore, they're caught up with the class still, and they're not months and months behind. Does that, does that make sense? And they can keep moving forward.
For the student that's missing out on a concept and is still in his section of the Core, that's a good explanation.
Yes.
Is there any fluidity between these, uh, strategic and Core classes, which are, as you said, ability grouped?
Mm-hmm, well, then there is. And, and that's part of the reason that, that we have to keep the scope and sequence of, of the strategic and the Core class relatively close so that, you know, if, if we have a student in strategic who, um, you know, had, had some kind of a skill deficit um, early in the year, we correct that skill deficit and they no longer need that strategic support, we can move them directly into Core. And vice versa, a student that's in Core that we find is having, um, some kind of a difficulty and, and needs more support than we can give in the Core class, uh, we can move them directly into the strategic class. Uh, and again, that's that fluidity.
I'm confused because it, it, the way I'm hearing it i- is that they move out of the one into the other and out of, and I thought I heard you say that they're taking the two classes at the same time.
They're moving out of elective, yeah.
Oh, all right.
And they'll be, and they'll be, actually, they'll be both. There'll be kids that have two classes and kids that only have one, depending on their needs.
Right. So, they don't have to lose out on a whole trimester of an elective. They might only miss out on a week or two weeks.
Right.
If that's all they need.
Exactly.
Okay.
Are you actually moving them out in a week or two weeks or is it a quarter by quarter?
Um, ideally, it would be nice to move them out as quickly as we can.
So, they're not punished?
That's, yeah, and that's what the, the E P Cs, that's what they tell us, is that it needs to be as fluid as possible and it shouldn't wait on arbitrary dates like end of quarter and those kinds of things. Move kids into, to support when they need it and you move them out if they don't need it anymore.
Ideally, that is, if they have, can function. Is your staff buying into this fluid movement idea?
Well, um, you know, uh, it's, it's difficult. It's difficult because, um, when we move kids' schedules around, we lose grade data and all those kinds of things.
Well, if you have a, a section that is full, or if they take students over to the maximum number.
Well, no, those are contract issues. And, and no, probably not. Uh, but, but again, if we place kids, the better we do at placing them from placement test and all that stuff, the less movement we'll have. So, you know, it starts, it starts there. It starts with doing the best we can to appropriately place, um, and then, then work to meet their needs.
So, if I read this, um, on this form.
Okay.
Okay, and it says sixty to seventy percent of incoming seventh graders are at or close to grade level. So, they come in, so that, then you're saying thirty to forty percent are not even at this level. Is that correct? Or are you saying out of that thirty to forty percent, some are more than that and some are way lower?
Well, what I'm, what, what this tells you is that for Algebra I, somewhere around thirty to forty percent of them will be in Core Algebra I and take the Algebra I CST. About, you know, sixty to seventy will take the general math test. Um, there's, there's another small portion here that, that we're really not calling out. And those are our intensive, um, intervention kids. Those are kids, um, that have, you know, specific learning disabilities, uh, or, or other kinds of things. And they're, they're way behind. They're three, four, five, seven, eight years behind.
Far below basic.
Right.
On the test.
Right.
Because I'm just remembering kids who, who ended seventh grade, who were still on multiplication tables.
Right. Yeah, and, yeah, still, still not, not really understanding, you, you know, two-digit division.
So, I was struggling with the concept of them to even, of being in a Core pre-algebra class.
And they wouldn't be, uh, they wouldn't be, um, but that's an intensive intervention program. Uh, and those kids have various specific needs.
In order to get beyond program improvement assess, um, what kind of gains will you have to make using this approach?
Well, uh, to get out of program improvement, we have to hit what's called safe harbor, uh, which means we have to decrease the number of our kids not proficient, both school-wide and in any subgroup. Uh, we have to decrease that number by ten percent a year. For this last testing cycle, we missed it by about one student. Uh, the year before, uh, that testing cycle, uh, looking at the numbers, we probably missed it by maybe two, maybe only one again, one or two students. Uh, so, so giving us these tools that we need so that we can collaborate, so that we can build common assessments, so that we have data that we can use to make, uh, good decisions, to drive our decision-making processes, that'll get us where we need to be. The teachers are working very hard. They're doing everything they can. Uh, you know, if, we just, we just, we just got to have these tools to be able to collaborate together uh, to make this all work.
I had the opportunity of coming to be in one of the math classes a couple of weeks ago for an hour. And during that time, um, the students were working on a little handbook that Mr. Funkhauser had prepared. Also didn't ask for it back. Which to me seemed to be an extremely helpful thing. Or, and basically what it was, was going through the testing that they had to take and giving examples and having them have examples, problems that they were going to have to work in order to take, uh, to test and approximately how many of that type problem would be in the test. And I guess all of the math people were using it.
Yes.
And it just seemed to me that that in itself was good collaboration.
Absolutely.
Something that all of them are working on. I think if anyone could, any department could pull it off, that that math department at Zane can do it.
Absolutely. And, and they're doing the best they can to, to collaborate. You know, uh, just the very nature of, of our curriculum is just getting in the way at this point.
Yeah.
And really, we can hold up the language arts department and say, as an example, they have this common, uh, common curriculum that was adopted, I believe, last year. Uh, and because of that, we've been able to put all the, a common scope and sequence, a common pacing guide, we've built common assessments, all of those things are in place. Um, and we have seen phenomenal, phenomenal improvement across the language arts department. And we've seen, we've seen great progress in, in the math department, too. But again, it's, it's our adopted curriculum that's, that's kind of hindering us at this point. It's a speed bump.
One last little thing. Is the high school accepting the Algebra I course as part of their core now? The eighth grade?
If, if, um, if this, if a student, if a student takes Algebra I at the eighth grade or, or the seventh grade and, and on the state, on the CST, the California Standards Test, they get proficient or advanced, the, the high school accepts their, their class as great.
So, may I ask Jessica? So, Jessica, um, for adopting those two new textbooks, are we looking at buying two for every student, one for at school and one for at home?
Not two for every student. We're looking at buying one for every student plus some additional classroom sets.
Okay. Because I think now they have, what, one at school and one at home?
Um. Yeah, mostly, yeah. Um, we really, we really can't afford to buy two books for every student. But, but at the same time, we really can't ask kids to carry a backpack that weighs, you know, seventy pounds. So, uh, what we're looking at is one for every student, uh, that goes home with them and stays home, and then a classroom set that stays in the classroom, that the kids all day long use that same classroom set. Does that make sense?
And will that come out of Zane funds?
I'm sorry.
Will that come out of Zane funds or different funding?
Districts.
District funds.
District funding, okay.
And on page thirty-four, you know, book pack.
Go ahead.
I have a sort of comment. Um, she says for geometry, we have to carry a book somewhere. We only have, we have seventeen books.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, create some problems sometimes.
Well, um, we purchased for geometry this year because we did know how it was going to go. We, we weren't sure, um, how many kids would, would make it through the class, would want to get out, you know, all those kinds of things. Now, um, now for next year, now, you know, we're looking to see, okay, it looks like we will have this geometry class. How many students we're going to have, we don't know yet. If we have a full kind of section, if we have fifteen or, or twenty kids, then, then we'll look at doing the same thing for geometry. Uh, but right now, that's, that's a real unknown.
Yeah.
Uh, so, that's, that's, you know.
Hey, any other comments from the public? Board members? And we'll go ahead and put this on consent at the next, um, board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I apologize for all the technical difficulties. I just had no idea. I thought it would all be all. I just had no idea that... I thought it would all be up in front of me.
Well, it's preserved for posterity now. Meaning for being filmed now. Okay, we'll move to N twenty-two.
Substantial materials adoption.
I'd like to introduce this one as well, members of the board. The governing board has asked to discuss prior to adoption the materials recommended for Zane Middle School English Language Development and Reading Intervention, published by Hampton Brown National Geographic. The textbook program is called Inside. What is interesting and a definite advantage to using this program is that the companion, published by the same publisher, at the high school is called Edge. And that has been in place this year, and it's getting rave reviews from the teachers using it in special education and in the interventions, intensive intervention and in the ELD program. They had a week-long training this year. Also, you'll note in the board packet that the ELD course outlines were adopted for Eureka High School in two thousand and eight for English Language Development. Guidelines were developed at that time for the middle school and for elementary ELD courses. At that time, it was also recommended that the middle school investigate an appropriate program for English Language Development. So we... there's a lot of material here that I'm not gonna read aloud for you, but the bottom line is, after a couple of years, now, we have come across the... This two-level program, Inside and Edge, designed for secondary levels. And we think that this is the thing that is going to boost the program at Zane Middle School that will make the difference. We knew a few years ago that we had to update the curriculum, and we think we've found the right one that's gonna make a big difference for kids. Earlier this evening, Ms. Alexander and I were discussing numbers of kids, and I need to make a correction in the green sheet there on page thirty-seven, that the... my original estimate is that the cost will be under ten thousand dollars. But looking at the numbers of kids coming up from the sixth grade and the numbers of kids currently at Zane, the Zane Middle School would need two sections of ELD, and then we need to add in the cost of the teacher materials and training. So the total package may come up to about fifteen thousand dollars instead of the ten that you see there listed.
Mr. Bush, are you planning to make a high-tech presentation?
I'm not. Ms. Alexander is taking the lead on this one.
All right, Director of ELD Programs.
So, most of you were here when we brought the ELD course outlines for the secondaries, and that was over a year-long process when we had both the middle school teachers and the high school teachers who were involved in teaching ELD to come together and look at those course outlines, and they are based on ELD standards. And definitely, course outlines are high school, but we use those as guidelines for our instruction in the middle school for English learners is all about them. Fifty-eight percent, approximately, of students who do not... Hispanic students are Hispanic students who don't graduate from high school. About eighty percent of those students are what we call long-term English learners. And that generally means that those English learners have been in our schools since kindergarten. And they are still considered English learners when they're in middle school or even have been to high school. And it's a national... I don't wanna say phenomenon. It's national that we recognize that this is a challenge. And when we look at our English learners, then we say, gosh, what is it? They are generally fairly fluent in their language. You would talk to these students and would have no clue that they are English learners until you start having a conversation that's an academic discourse. Or you look at their writing. I can look at any piece of writing and immediately tell you what level of skill they are and everything about them by looking at their writing. And so, the focus in the role of English learners for our long-term ELD kids is to design programs that are focusing on the academic discourse, the academic language and vocabulary, a focus on writing, and more content involved in their ELD program. So that's kind of what we went looking for when we were looking for programs at the high school. Hampton Brown's program is also a company that's worked with National Geographic. It's now National Geographic Hampton Brown. So again, both the Edge at the high school and the Inside at the elementary, great deal of science, great deal of social science, and some classics. It's very interesting, engaging, up-to-date. Because our English learners have had curriculum that is drop-down boring in what the curriculum tiers have been available. It has nothing to do with the teacher. It's what they have been using as the tools. Our teachers at both the high school and at the middle school and at the elementary, if I may be simple, have been looking for a program that is a singular program that has a lot on plot, a focus on the reading comprehension skills, writing, and is engaging and interesting and focused on the ELD learners. So we think that we have found that in both of these programs. A lot of these long-term English learners have had one or another type of kind of interrupted schooling. They may have started in kindergarten and first grade in a bilingual program, second, third, fourth, fifth grade, perhaps a weaker ELD program or no ELD at all, depending on which schools and districts they have. They move into middle school, but they're just hovering below being proficient. There are a lot of them in the low basic and the below basic regions. They're not newcomers in our school. We only have a handful, less than five newcomers, that come to our schools and middle school. So we're looking at a program that's focused on us kids who've been here for a while, reading comprehension. Right. We did not go through, as Dr. Lenz mentioned, in a formal piloting process for some unusual circumstances. There's just one teacher who teaches ELD at the middle school. Because there really are only fifty students who are currently English learners. There are about a hundred of them that are perhaps reclassifying into a fluent status, but some of those students may well benefit from being in the ELD course as well. Because they met our minimum criteria to be reclassified as fluent. They're still struggling. And so, this program is a solid program for English Language Development. It was one of the programs adopted by the state for intensive reading intervention, much like the Read One Eighty. This one as well. But this one has a lot more hard ELKs than the Read One Eighty. It can be used as intensive, it can be used as ELD, and it can be used as a strategic course as well for the Language Arts program. We're looking at two sections. We'll start there. There are actually five levels to the Inside. Level A and Level B are mostly planning, or in response, and decoding. Level C begins about a third-grade reading proficiency level, and it kind of steeply cruises up to get them into grade-level steps. It will be very nice to have articulation between the high schools and the middle schools. And placement tests, we're working with all of the elementaries. So there's Chuck. We're looking at all of the elementaries. And our elementaries, we only have about fifteen to twenty English learners moving up from our sixth grades up into seventh grade. But looking at placement tests for those kids that might have a spot so that, again, the master schedule is designed around the kids who need specific courses and that be placed in there. And then the high school is eager to see and have the current eighth graders at Zane taking their placement tests so that when they move up into high school, we know where placement is as well. And I think it's gonna cost closer to twenty thousand. It also has an online study, which is really nice as well. So the kids have a textbook, they have hard writing that they need to be focused on, but they also have some online coaching support, is what they call it, for the kids.
Is that an additional cost?
It's in the around a hundred and fifty dollars per student. If there's a subscription on a three-month, nine-month, or twelve-month basis.
I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty dollars per student?
For the entire student kind of cost. So it is about a hundred and forty-two dollars, which includes the subscription, the textbook, and the writing book. So I do all the round numbers. Questions?
Sounds good.
After that math, you guys are just gonna go, okay.
Thanks a lot.
And your most appearing circular display, back to the room now.
Any comments, those members of the public, comments to that?
Excellent literature. Excellent literature. You can just look at the list of books and the stack of the... It's just really well done, very well done. So, very well scat for them.
Thank you, Mrs. Siddle. Okay. This item will need to consent to the next agenda, the next meeting. Government workshop agenda for June first. And this is the proposed agenda which we need to change because apparently we have a need for closed session, which would be held at six-thirty prior to the seven o'clock. So we lose a half an hour. So Nikki suggested, and I concur, but we just eliminate the Brown Act pressure, place that on the July agenda. And then we'll simply go from four to five for the government's handbook, and then from five to six-thirty for board self-evaluation. And then six-thirty, we move into closed session at seven o'clock. Was everybody good?
Five to six-thirty, the board's evaluation, and then six-thirty.
Six-thirty to seven is closed session.
Closed session.
Yeah.
And we originally didn't. We originally tried to count, and we went right up to the...
Right.
And we made closed session.
Okay. Okay. Ready, we're good?
No problem.
Johnson, please. Okay, that's discussion, we're good. So now we move to N twenty-four, board bylaws.
N twenty-four, our board bylaws, nine-one-two-three, nine-one-four-zero, and nine-three-two-three. As you look through these, these are very straightforward and required policies, even though it say optional, like on page forty-one it says optional, but then it also says is required by Education Code three-one-four-three-five-one-four-three. So we are required to have a clerk. On number four, we cross off the vice president. We don't have the vice president role. So the clerk serves as the presiding officer in the absence of the president. So that one's straightforward. The board bylaw nine-one-four-zero, which starts on page forty-three, is actually a required bylaw. It just may be revised to reflect our practice. But this very, very closely follows the practice that we currently have and are currently using by policy. And then again, on board bylaw nine-three-two-three-point-two, which starts on page forty-five, just specifically talks about the actions by the board. These are all pursuant to head code and are required. So all three of these are very straightforward policies. But I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
We never had it here, do we, correct? A witch, right?
Not us, but others.
Not very much, I know, but we have in Humboldt County, yes.
Never heard of it.
Okay. Any comments, public comments? Okay. We will move these to consent at the next meeting. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. There will be no further closed session. Are we okay? Okay. I will adjourn the meeting.
I am on my way. Was I speeding?